Thank you. The time being 6:00 PM. We will call to order this the Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 Meeting of Plymouth Select Board. Please join the Board in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format. Members of the Board are joining us here physically at the Great Hall at Town Hall. Other members of the Board, we anticipate, are going to be joining us virtually over the Zoom webinar platform. The login information for the Zoom webinar platform is included on the agenda that is posted on the Town website. Members of the public that wish to observe this meeting or participate in it may do so by joining us here at the Great Hall at Town Hall. They may join us on the Zoom webinar platform, or they may observe the meeting by watching it on the local scene on Comcast Channel 9 or Channel 47 if you have Verizon. Members of the public are also reminded, per Massachusetts General Law, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair, subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair, so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. At present, we are aware of a recording being made by the local scene. We are not aware of any other recordings being made. All right. With that in mind, we will move into our substantive agenda. The first thing on our agenda this evening is an update on the 2025 Jordan Hospital Club Polar Plunge update, and I have it on good authority that we are joined by none other than Jordan, the polar bear himself.
Our very own mascot.
Yes.
Hi there. My name is Catherine McKenna, and I'm here on behalf of the Jordan Hospital Club Polar Plunge Committee. Very excited. First of all, thank you to the town of Plymouth, not only the Select Board, but the Parks Department, Harbor Master, Visor Service Bureau, who really, since day one, our first plunge, 22 years ago, have been there to support us and to help us get this underway. So this is a Polar Plunge Nelson's Beach Saturday, March 1st. The money raised goes to the Cancer Center BID Plymouth. Over the past 22 years, $1.6 million has been donated to the hospital from Jordan and his cohorts, who dash into the water, very quick dash, in and out, so fast, you don't even know you're in and out. And so would like to ask once again the Select Board and others gathered here to think about either joining a team, which is always a really fun thing. There's lots of food and music, and it's almost like a family festival atmosphere there. Just a great day at the beach, March 1st. And as I said, we, most donations come in denominations of $5, $10, $25. So it's extraordinary when you think of the amount of money raised and the way that it was done. So that's just a testament to the people of this community and beyond the neighboring towns who've been able to do that for us. So it won't take up a lot of time, but I have lots of brochures here. And our website is jordanhospitalclub.org. You can register, you can send a team, or pledge Jordan, who will be there on Saturday. So I don't know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate the update. We appreciate all the efforts. Jordan Hospital Polar Plunge has been very successful over the years in raising money and awareness, and we welcome the continued existence of that in the community. That brings us into the next items on our agenda, which is the licenses that are listed. Does any member of the Board have any questions or comments on any of the licenses? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question on the application from the National MS Society. I see that their event is taking place the day after our local election, with a primary spot being Plymouth North High School. I just want to find out if possible, if there's any impact to that location for setup the day prior, if the MS Society knows that we are having an election that day.
Yeah, I can't speak directly whether or not the society is aware of the election. I can tell you that all these permits are reviewed and vetted by the Fire Department, the Police Department, and EMS, as long as, as well as public works as well. So we'll take a look at that and make sure that both events can continue to take place.
Perfect. Thank you.
Derek Wood, given that it's several months away, and that the start time for the event is 8:45 on 5/8, 8:45 AM on 5/18, suggesting that they're probably setting up on 5/17 or 5/16, would it make sense to hold off on this until we get a response from them? Or do you want to, would you recommend that we proceed?
Yeah, we certainly, as you point out, we have plenty of time. We can circle back with the applicant and get more detail if the Board wishes.
Mr. Bledser.
Mr. Vice Chairman, most of these races, everyone I've seen, they set up the day of. They come in early in the morning, and they set up, they're pretty organized, the ones I've seen. So I would anticipate that they won't even do one of them on Saturday, that they'll come in early on Sunday morning and set it up. So that's, the races I've seen, that's how they do it.
Okay.
Same thing with their breakup. They break down afterwards still, so.
Right, right. And they're breaking up at 12:45, so presumably they're going to break it down that day.
So I don't think, I don't think you should have a concern on the election day.
Okay.
Do I know for a fact? No, but that's, that's usually how it works.
All right. Any other questions or concerns?
I recommend we approve it, and then if there's an issue, we can, we can always bring it back. Town manager can bring it back, so.
Mr. Golden?
I would prefer that we wait to hear back from the applicant. There's no rush on this particular license. I'm amenable to it. I have no problem granting the license, just pending that there's no impact to our local elections the day before.
I am inclined to agree with Mr. Golden, considering we are meeting next week, so they would still have months in advance of their event, and then we could have an answer. I don't disagree with Mr. Bledser that there, it's probably an outdoor event, and it's probably not going to have an impact, but I would feel more comfortable.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, all right. So unless there is an objection, I would, I would seek to not solicit a motion for that particular license, but if there were, if there are no other questions or comments from my colleagues, I would solicit a motion for the outdoor amplified music permit for Indian Head Resort Incorporated and the one-day wine and malt for MAR Promotions.
So moved?
Mr. Golden has moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bledser has seconded that we approve the remaining licenses. As a group, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Bledser?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is unanimous. All right, so we have approved the remaining licenses. That brings us into the administrative notes. I have received a request to take the administrative notes individually this evening. The first administrative note is Administrative Note 1. That would be, the Board will vote to approve and release meeting minutes from 1/14/2025. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the proposed meeting minutes from January 14th? Does anyone have anything they would like to add, edit, alter, or otherwise change in regards to the proposed meeting minutes of January 14th before I solicit a motion for their approval? Hearing and seeing none, do I have such a motion?
So moved?
Mr. Golden has moved. Mr. Bledser has seconded that we approve the proposed meeting minutes of January 14th. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Bledser?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is unanimous. We have approved the proposed meeting minutes of January 14th, making them the meeting minutes of January 14th. That brings us into Administrative Note 2 in regards to a fraternization and employee policy. So do we have any members of the Board that have any questions or comments in regards to the proposed fraternization employee policy?
I just have a procedural question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Golden.
Is your preference to add comments during the motion section, or are you taking those now?
I would say if you want, you could make, you could ask questions now. If you have a question for presumably the Town Manager or the Assistant Town Manager, or HR, we do have the HR Director in the audience, if you...
Mr. Canty?
And Mr. Quintle, yes?
Can I? I'm sorry. I just want to let the Board know that I took the fraternization policy with the help of Mr. Janeo, and met with Jessica Scalia from SEIU, and I've also been in contact with Tracy Wright, who is their union rep. And they told me today they had no issue with the fraternization policy as it currently stands. They recommended, I think, several changes. We adjusted those, and they were happy with that, just to report that back to the Board.
Okay. And you were, you're kind of breaking up, and your, your volume, we're working on your volume, Mr. Quintle, but could you, could you just repeat which of the unions that you spoke to?
Yes, SEIU. I spoke with Jessica Scalia this morning, and they had no issue with it. They had three recommended changes, and Silvio adjusted and worked with them, and they're good to go.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, so as to Mr. Golden, your, if you have questions, you could ask them now. If you have a comment, it'd be available during discussion. Okay. Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion in regards to Administrative Note 2?
Move approval?
Mr. Golden has moved. Do I have a second?
Oh, sir.
And Mr. Bledser has seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The policy that's before us today, for folks in the audience who probably haven't seen this, is a fraternization policy. It's designed to regulate, for better, for better or worse, the interpersonal relationships between staff members. I have a philosophical disagreement with one element of this that I, I find irreconcilable for myself. Under Section A 2, the, the proposed language is that non-supervisory employees, which are employees who have no supervision responsibilities over one another, are not allowed to date or to be otherwise involved in romantic relationships with any other employee of their division. My, I believe that folks who are consenting adults who make a mature decision to enter into an interpersonal relationship ought to have the right to do that. And so I'm interested to hear from my other colleagues if they are amenable to a change here, because I don't, while I think there's some value in other elements of this, I think this policy is a little, is a little too heavy-handed in that singular regard. So I don't know if it's quite there yet, but I'd like to hear from my colleagues as to whether or not they agree.
When you, when you suggest a change, do you have something specific in mind, Mr. Golden?
Yeah, my suggestion was to change, non-supervisory employees are not allowed to discouraged from being involved in a romantic relationship.
Okay. So non-supervisory employees are discouraged from being involved in a romantic relationship with any other employee of their division, would be how that would read?
Correct.
Okay. That is Mr. Golden's position? Does anyone, any other member of the Board have a position on that, on either the language as written or Mr. Golden's suggested modification? Seeing, Mr. Quintle?
My only question is if Mr. Janeo feels that that, that language is appropriate right there. If he's good with that, then I'm good with it.
Okay. Silvio, did you have a, we are technically in a motion, but I will open it up to you to see if you have a comment on Mr. Golden's proposed edit?
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this. Without really getting too much into detail, again, the whole goal is to bring this policy to you as the policymaking board of the town, to discuss something that, not only in our community, but it's just in this day and age, we have to be mindful of. And as of right now, the town just does not have a policy to address these specific situations, whether it is supervisory and non-supervisory, or non-supervisory staff. So we see a potential area of liability for the town, and not necessarily only for the town, but also for the employees themselves, in which they could be in situations where they come to the Human Resources Department or their supervisor with a complaint because of something that's a relationship that maybe not professional, but it's, you know, something that happens outside of the job, but as you folks mentioned, could start at the job. So our goal is to make sure that we have specific black and white policies on how to address these situations, not only for the benefit of avoiding any liability to the town, but also to protect the rights and the morale of the employees. So when it comes to the word discourage, the analogy that I like to use is, is there's, when you say discourage, or when anybody says discourages, we're saying, well, we're not saying no, we're saying you could do this. So at that point in time, if somebody acts or does something in a way that is in contradiction with the policy, it takes away the ability for us to be able to act, because we're discouraging, we're not saying you're not allowed or you're allowed. So the language that I would like to use is not allowed, instead of the language that's being used right now. Because, and again, that also is just my own, my personal opinion in discussions that I've had with the Human Resources Department, but this is also a policy that's been vetted by our Labor Attorney, and this is the language that our Labor Attorney has also agreed to and recommended. So that's why we're trying to use the specific language, because if in the future something happens, then we have this policy to say, policy to say, this is how we're gonna proceed when those situations occur.
Mr. Bledser?
I agree with Mr. Janeo, and discourage is just too vague. I mean, discouraged, you know. How do you discourage, and what happens if there, there is a dating relationship? What is, what's the remedy? What, you know, does a department head have? If it's, if it's not allowed, it's a policy. And, and there's remedies for that policy short of termination. You know, they can, they can move out of the division, they can, there's remedies for them besides, it's not termination. So I think this is not unique to Plymouth. I think that most towns have this, this policy. I think it's a good policy. It's, it's, it morale, it hurts morale, it saves on lawsuits, potential lawsuits, you know, and it's, there's a lot of employees and, you know, department heads shouldn't have to worry about, you know, what the folks are doing out on the job, out, you know. You use an example of DPW, a couple of folks out working on a job, and there's a dispute, you know, whether it's domestic or whatever. And I don't really get specific, but, you know, it just, it's not, it's not a healthy situation. So it's, it's unfortunate, it's an unnecessary evil, this, this, and, so we need to have a policy to, to hopefully this doesn't happen. And if it does happen, if two people date, and there's ways of, you know, that showed up breaking up, that they can, they can, they can move to another department. There's other ways of solving that. But there's a reason, and this has gone, we negotiated, part of the collective bargaining, this was part of it. I was involved in three different unions, and they all agreed to it that they definitely, we needed a fraternization policy. They just, we had to get the wording right. And this has been going on since July. Now we're almost into February, and so I think it's been thought of, it's gone back and forth. You heard Chairman Quintle just said he talked to some of the unions, and that they, that a couple of weeks ago, we weren't ready to vote on this, because they needed more time, and he's since talked to them, and they agree on it. So I, I just think this is a healthy, I'll call this a healthy policy. So, so I'm supportive of this.
Silvio, in relation to what Mr. Golden brought up, the last sentence of that particular paragraph reads, "It shall be the responsibility of the employee to report the romantic relationships with other employees to the department head or their designee." And then a subsequent following paragraph says, "The town shall review violations on a case-by-case basis and determine appropriate action. Appropriate action may include, but is not limited to, moving, reassigning, transferring, or changing assignments, including shifts and/or discipline, up to and including termination of employment with the town." So it just seems you're, they're not allowed to be in a relationship, but if they are in a relationship, it's their obligation to report it, even though if they report it, they could be fired. Is that, would that be an accurate reading of the language as written?
Not necessarily. So what you're reading is the appropriate actions, and let me give you some context, because these are conversations we had with the unions when we were negotiating these policies. It's basically, that came up during those conversations, and they said, okay, same thing as you said. If somebody's in violation of this policy, so are you just gonna fire people? And we said, no. Everybody in this room, which is all of the union members that are represented there, we said, you have a collective bargaining agreement. The town can unilaterally fire anybody. We can't discipline anybody unless there's just cause, right? There's an element to that. So what that means is that violation of this policy will be treated on a case-by-case basis as any other potential violations of any policy, or violation of any behavior that's not tolerated in the town, which is guided by their respective collective bargaining agreements. Which, again, the only reason to adding the additional language of moving, reassigning, and transferring, or changing assignments, is because their collective bargaining agreements don't talk about that as forms of discipline. And again, let me, let me go back to what I said before. The whole point of this is to make sure that we are also protecting our employees in the event that something happens, right? You have a relationship in, with a coworker, which is, you folks said, you know, you're allowed to have, but this is a place of work, this is a professional environment. So we want to understand, and we want to be able to discuss, and we want to be able to have the understanding on both parties, the employer and the employees, as to if and when something like this goes off, how does it impact the work environment? So by trying to be as broad as we could, that's why we added that paragraph. But the understanding and the intent behind the language, and I'm saying this on the record, but I said it to the unions too, is so that if and when that happens, and there's a situation in which two employees are working in the same division, these are the options that we have. However, if there's a situation where discipline is warranted, or the department had determined that discipline is warranted, then that falls under the collective bargaining agreement. Discipline, all collective bargaining agreements have a discipline clause, so we have to abide by that. What we're trying to say with this is, before we even have discipline, if we don't think it's a discipline situation, because we value our employees, we're not in the business of losing employees, whether they're in a relationship or not, is we want to reassure you that you be able to be reassigned, moved to a different division, and stay within the town, which, again, is something that was amicable to the unions. So that's the goal of that language in that paragraph.
But the discipline makes clear that it could be up to and included termination.
And that's just standard language. If you read any collective bargaining agreement, it'll say that, because if that's not included, as part of discipline, we can't terminate employees, we can't give them verbal warnings, we can't give them written warnings. So that's just standard discipline language within labor laws. So if you don't determine what the type of discipline is, it's hard to enforce that type of discipline. So you try to be as broad with the level of discipline that you can enforce, depending on the situation. So like labor, labor CBAs, let's say, suspension, termination, written warning, verbal warning, so that was, this language is just mimicking that. But again, I can't stress that enough, discipline is done in accordance to each individual collective bargaining agreement. So the Town Manager was a union member, and he's in a, in a union, and I'm in a different union, our discipline languages could be different. So there's a, again, there's a violation of any policy or anything, that would take precedent over this.
Okay. Mr. Bledser?
Just, not to keep popping on this, but this, if you have a situation, and the policy says discourages, it doesn't say not allowed. If you have two employees that are dating, and everybody knows about it, and the department head confronts them and says, I really don't think it's appropriate to be dating, and be discouraging, but they don't stop dating.
No, you're not.
Excuse me. And they don't, they don't stop dating, but everything's fine. There's no problems. And then a few months later, another couple starts dating, and there's problems. And because the policy doesn't say that it's not allowed, it just discourages. They discipline the one or two of those, of a couple, while they turn around and they tell the department, well, wait a minute, you didn't do anything to couple number one over there. So there's a problem. Next thing you know, there's a lawsuit, grievance, lawsuit, whatever's gonna happen, but it's gonna cost the town money. And that's the reason, just to eliminate situations like this, hopefully. It's, it's, it's never gonna eliminate it completely, but hopefully it's gonna, I hate using the word discouraged, but it's, you have to have the policy, 'cause if not, there's, it's, it's hard to do anything about it, so. And they should be one set of rules for everybody, that's the only way, that's the only way, I know as a manager, that's the only way I could manage. I can't, I can't have two rules, two sets of rules, it causes problems, so anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Bledsler. Any other discussion? I will say that, from my perspective, I am inclined to agree with Mr. Golden. I think that although I hear the merits of what Mr. Bledsler is saying, as well as I hear from Mr. Quintle about his reports from the unions that he spoke to, I think while there is clear reasons for supervisors to not be permitted to be in a romantic relationship with their supervisees, and that the issues there are fairly self-evident, I think in regards to non-supervisory, historically, many people have met their significant others through their place of employment, and I think historically that has probably, probably caused some issues from time to time, but such is life when, in human beings, I think there's only so much you can restrict in that regard. They're not in a supervisory position, so I don't know that they have that level of, putting that level of restriction on them is perhaps overly burdensome. I also find the, the changing of language from strictly prohibited to not allowed to be an exercise in opening a thesaurus, and not making a meaningful difference in the policy. I would be inclined to, if Mr. Golden were to make a motion to amend the main motion, I would be inclined to second it. If that motion were to pass, I would vote for the policy as amended. If the policy were not amended with that language, I would vote against it. I would point out procedurally that, given that there are four of us here, if two of us vote yes, and two of us vote no, on an unamended policy, that policy does not pass. So, with that in mind, any other discussion, or any motions to amend?
For clarification, Mr. Chairman, is your request for an amendment to the main motion to the language that I described earlier?
Yes, which I believe was to change the first line of A2 to, "Non-supervisory employees are discouraged from becoming involved in a romantic relationship with any other employee of their division."
I would make a motion to amend the main motion in that manner.
I would second. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for a vote. This is a motion to amend, if it passes, the main motion would be so amended. If it fails, we would go back to the original main motion, without the amendment. With that in mind, Mr. Bledsler, how do you vote on the motion to amend?
Vote no.
Thank you. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
No.
And myself, yes. So the vote is two yes and two no, the motion to amend fails, so we go back to the motion as originally proposed, which is not amended. Do we have any further discussion before I call for a vote on the unamended motion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for a vote. Mr. Bledsler, how do you vote on the original main motion with no amendments?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
No.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, no. The fraternization employee policy does not pass. That brings us to administrative note three, that would be in regards to a social media employee policy. Do we have any questions or comments from members of the board in regards to that? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Silvio, you and I sat down this afternoon to discuss this policy as well, and I made some suggestions regarding the substance of the policy, and I appreciate the time that you gave to me. Can you just explain how you went through and amended this policy further?
Absolutely. In summary, right now, as the policy was presented to you folks, it talked about the policy applying to employees, officers and officials, elected or appointed of the town. Your request was to remove officers and officials from the policy, and just have the policy applied to employees of the town, which we don't have an issue with. Again, the goal is to ensure that we have policies that ensure the safe and organized operation of the town, and as it affects employees, so. And as Mr. Bledsler said, again, for the sake of fair and equity, so that everybody's playing under the same rules, so, we have no issues with that.
Thank you, Mr. Jeneo. The, the reason for those amendments was because the, the state's Ethics Commission dictates what we can and can't do as elected and appointed officials in town, so we're already covered in that regard. I think that is it.
Okay. Any, any other questions from any other members of the board? So, Mr. Jeneo, I have a copy of the policy that has a red line through in the first section, officers and officials elected or appointed is crossed out, but then other further references still use, in varying ways, either employees and officials, or employees or officials throughout. So, I think if the intention is to remove officials throughout, I would suggest that any, any mention of and, and official, or or official, throughout the document also be stricken, and that it just be limited to employees. Would that be consistent with the intention of the edit?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Mr. Golden?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I did have one other thing that I discussed with the Assistant Town Manager. Under Section B, prohibited conduct, number four, Silvio, I believe we added at the end of that paragraph, the words, "Or by majority vote of the select board." This would empower the select board, in addition to the town manager, to authorize the use of the seal on internet sites.
That's correct.
Thank you. In writing in advance by the town manager, or by majority vote of the select board?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? Mr. Golden, would you like to make a motion to approve admin note three, but by, with striking any reference to and official, or or officials, throughout the document, and adding, "Or by majority vote of the select board," to the end of Section B, number four?
So moved.
Do I have a second for that motion? All right, it has been moved by Mr. Golden, it has been seconded by Mr. Bledsler. Do we have any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Bledsler?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is unanimous, we have approved admin note three. That brings us to admin note four, which is in relation to a select board media relations policy. Mr. Brindisi?
Greg, good evening, Derek Brindisi, Town Manager. So I'm gonna do a short presentation on the proposed media policy. I know we sent this to the board late this past weekend, so it definitely warrants public discussion, especially given some of the most recent controversy, talking about how we will respond to media. So let me, first by saying that many of the elements that you'll find in this media policy, we found with other major metropolitan municipalities, so we review this as more of a best practice, and what I wanna talk about this evening. In addition to that, this is not that different than a set of rules that the Vice Chairman had negotiated on behalf of the town with some of our local media sources. So, everything I talk about tonight isn't gonna be that far afield from our previous operations. So again, I don't typically like to read slides, but I think given tonight's discussion, I'll do a little bit of that. So the purpose of the media policy is, the town policy establishes guidelines for how non-elected town personnel should engage with members of recognized news and media organizations. The intended purpose of establishing a town media relations policy is to ensure a coordinated response with the town manager's office and relevant departments to share public information on behalf of the town. This policy governs the town manager and staff, town department heads, and all other town employees, but not elected officials, and certainly not our board and committee So some of the spokespeople you'll see listed here, so certainly myself as a town manager, or one of my designees, our communications coordinator, on an as-needed basis, can speak on behalf of the town. Fire and police, you'll see throughout this document, a little bit different. Typically, fire and police are responding to crises, they have their own public information teams established, and so they are, they are always authorized to respond to media requests. And then the commissioner, or any director of any department, is also a designated spokesperson, specifically because they are the subject matter experts in their field. So as you all know, we have a communications coordinator, so just to be clear on the role of the communications coordinator, so I'll kinda summarize this, so, what we're trying to establish, and what we have established, is that our media requests go to the communications coordinator by the media. Once that information is communicated to our coordinator, in this case she, will then reach to those departments, will identify the relevant department, or department head, or their staff, and then establish a time and a place in which that information can be communicated back to that specific media outlet. And again, you know, fire and police are a little bit different, 'cause typically they're down on crises, so we do expect all information to be reported to the communications coordinator, and that's mostly for situational awareness, especially when it comes to fire and police. Certainly, I don't wanna open up the newspaper, and the select board certainly doesn't wanna read about some type of crisis that took place overnight, and so we wanna ensure that our media inquiries are at least communicated with our communications coordinator as well. We also have an expectation, you'll see in this document, that if the media were to inadvertently reach out to staff, that staff, they do know this policy, and that they will report any requests to them, to the communications coordinator, so that can be up channeled to our elected So this is the procedure, we will establish a, for all of our media outlets, a email address, so that if the role of the communications coordinator were to change in the future, we have this one-stop email address that we can create a listserv, so that many of specific town officials can receive those, can get, can have visibility on those types of requests. So very quickly, you know, we expect the name of the reporter, the media outlet they're representing, the specific requests, what they're looking for as far as the type of interview, and we also like, the more information, the better. So we want our staff to be prepared to do interviews, so the more information we can get from the media, the reporter, the better we are to respond to those requests, and so we don't have to have multiple interviews for the same story. This is just about media releases, so you probably saw we had three, actually four press releases this past weekend, one related to the storm, and three related to bird flu. So all press releases and public messages from town government should be published through the coordinator, except for those from fire and police, which I've talked about earlier, in coordination with the town communications, so all press releases and public messages will be archived for public record. That's part of our public records law. So not to get into the detail here, it's too wordy, so I won't read this all, but there are certain things that we can't say. So if we're in the middle of litigation, we're not gonna talk about that publicly, we don't want that to pose a risk to any depositions, or anything like that. There could be ongoing investigations, so as you know, fire and police have investigations, could be a fire investigation, verhassen, could be some type of police matter investigations, so we typically will not respond to those types of requests either. But then again, you know, requesting information regarding town employees, so our position in the past, if we need to protect the privacy of our employees, and so oftentimes, we do not comment on personal matters. You know, certainly if somebody who worked for the town for 35 years and had retired, you know, that's a great story to talk about, so we certainly, you know, would love to highlight somebody's years of service. But, you know, there are personal matters that are private and confidential, we will not respond to. In addition to that, as I pointed out in previous public discussions, we are beholden to the public records law, we have a public records access officer that can provide any document that the town possesses within 10 days. And then last, I'll end on this slide, so this policy's being brought in front of the select board for ratification, any changes to this policy would have to be brought back to the select board for any amendments in the future. Depending on any questions, that's all I have for this media policy. Again, very straightforward policy.
Thank you. Mr. Brindisi?
Any questions from any members of the board?
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Derek, could you go back to the purpose slide? And Jade, you may need to, oh, nevermind. So this is, so the way that you presented this, it's intended to govern the process for people who are employed by the town, essentially.
That is correct.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. This is non-elected town personnel, so that, would that include appointed members of boards and committees?
That would not include, if, if we want to be a little bit more explicit, we can say for not-elected officials and board and committee members. But this does not, this proposal does not currently, in its form, include board and committee members.
Okay, so this, this is just for hired employees?
That's correct.
Can you go to the, I think it might be the next slide, if it's, it's one after this? 2.1, okay. One moment. Did you, what's listed up there is 2.1.1.1, I've forgotten, but that's how the, that's how word wanted to format it. The town manager, their designee, will be authorized as spokesperson, she can, on behalf of the town, in the, I don't have that reflected, that particular component of this in the policy we have. Do you want that particular line in the?
That was a recommendation during the afternoon discussion. I reviewed this policy with Select Golden this afternoon, and that was one of the recommendations, 'cause my position wasn't explicitly listed, and I thought that was something we should consider.
Okay, all right. Any, did you, okay. Any other questions? All right, so, looking at what's in our packet, looks like we would need to exclude what's on page one, purpose, under purpose, there's a reference to members of boards and committees, we would eliminate that, and then we would add what is up there, 2.1.1.1, ahead of what is in our packet, it's listed with the same, and then obviously that would adjust the numbering accordingly, but otherwise, the text would remain unchanged. If there's no other questions, I would solicit a motion consistent with that, if that is the will of the board.
So moved.
Mr. Golden has moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bledsler has seconded. Any discussion about whether or not we should approve the media relations policy that we were just presenting? I will say that I, I worked with Mr. Brindisi on... I will say that I, I worked with Mr. Braddisi on this policy, and I also obviously was involved in working through things with the independent as well. And although the road had its ups and downs, I'm glad that we have reached a resolution that will work for residents as well as officials and will put us in a, what looks like a good setting for a professional relationship with the media. Obviously, as was alluded to in the last slide, the other considerations, there are things that the town is not going to want to talk about, like ongoing litigation, active investigations, certain personnel matters, things of that nature. We're also governed by the public records law, and we have to comply with that. Those are important considerations for the town. But the town certainly recognizes the benefit of having a relationship with the local news source and values that coverage and the service that it provides to residents trying to stay informed about what is happening in this community. And although things had its ups and downs, as I alluded to, I am glad to see that all, on the town side, we are moving forward in a productive way. And I think that is a credit to those involved, that despite those rough patches, we have reached a successful conclusion at the end. So I thank you, Mr. Braddisi, for working through this. I think you deserve credit for the resolution that has been reached as well. And I also thank certainly the independent and their staff, who are obviously the most publicly infaced media outlet that was affected by this. But we value the coverage of not only the independent, but also other media outlets, local and otherwise, as well. Any other discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none, I will call for a vote on admin note four. Mr. Bletzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Quint?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is unanimous. We have approved the media relations policy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braddisi. That brings us into our agenda proper. The first item on our agenda, as a main agenda item, would be the agricultural commission appointment for Mr. Evan Flaherty, who's a proposed candidate. It is for a one-year term. If you'd like to, I see Mr. Flaherty rising, if you want to come to the microphone and introduce yourself, say a few things about why you're interested in the appointment. We have your application materials in our packet, but anything you'd like us to know about yourself, and then we will open it up if we have any questions for you.
Sure. My name is Evan Flaherty. Lived in Plymouth my whole life, now raising my family here in Plymouth. Started a small backyard farm with my wife. We have an agriculture-adjacent business where my wife makes homemade soap, started as a goat milk soap company. Our backyard farm is primarily goats. We also have chickens, provide eggs to a lot of our neighbors, and we have some sheep for fun. I'm looking to get involved more in the community that I grew up with, in, and that I live in. And with the most recent discussions of the Board of Health, speaking about applying stricter regulations on farmers is what really made me not want to sit back and just complain on all things Plymouth, but actually take an active role in local government, we'll say. So I've been sitting in on ag comm meetings, and I'm happy to see that they're making good headway with that issue with local ag, and I'd like to be a part of that continuing.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Any questions? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here, Mr. Flaherty. When the matter is settled between the Agricultural Commission and the Board of Health or the Public Health Department, I think more specifically, would you anticipate continuing your service on the commission?
Yeah, I would. I'd like to stay on the commission to help mediate any problems between, you know, farmers and neighbors and keep agriculture a part of Plymouth and continue to promote it and try to get more, you know, especially younger people involved in ag locally.
I, I thank you for your response. My follow-up would have been, what would you like to do if you continue on? And you've answered that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Any other questions for the candidate? And I can't see Mr. Quintle. Jade, can you let me know if he has any questions when he's not on TV? I understand. Thank you. All right. Any, if we don't have any other questions, I will solicit a motion to nominate Mr. Flaherty.
Make the motion to nominate Mr. Flaherty for the one-year term.
All right, Mr. Bletzer has moved to nominate Mr. Evan Flaherty to fill the one-year term on the Agricultural Commission.
Second.
Mr. Golden has seconded. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Bletzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle is briefly offline. All right, and I will vote yes, and you are unanimously approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. That brings us into the Energy Committee appointments. We have two candidates for, there are two positions, each of which are three-year terms. I apologize in advance if I don't pronounce this correctly. Is it Faez Hamzo? Do we have Faez Hamzo in attendance? Online? All right. If you want to unmute yourself, thank you. And you can introduce, we have your application materials in our packet, but if you want to introduce yourself, and then we will open it up if we have any questions.
Sure. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
First thing, I would like to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to be here, even though I'm deployed at the moment outside the United States. My name is Faez Hamzo. I moved to the United States two years ago, and my family has been in Plymouth for like 20 years. We own master jewelers on Plymouth 61 Commerce Way. I studied physics. I have a bachelor's degree in physics, and I'm studying right now my master's degree in engineer project management. I joined the United States Army because I like to serve, and I was one of the 1% of the population who raised their hands and said, yes, I want to do that. So service is one of the major things that I like to do. I joined as an interior electrician at first, and then I got recruited back to be prime power, which is a power plant operator. So it's like a year-long study. We do that in the, in the Army. And currently, I've been deployed for several places, working on several projects concerning energy and how we can use sustainable energy and try to be more green efficient, and the Army is working on that side as well. I have like two years of experience in that field, and I'm very interested in serving in Plymouth for several reasons. The major reason is because I like to serve. The second reason is, at the end, I want to go back to Massachusetts and Plymouth specifically and live there after I finish my, my contract with the Army. So that would be it. I'm interested also, I've been reading a little, little bit about what you guys are doing, like Plymouth Go Green and Pace Massachusetts, and I'm interested in contributing to that.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hamzo, first, thank you for your service to this country.
Thanks, sir.
In your packet, so you just mentioned that you hope to move to Plymouth when you return from your deployment, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
How, and for how long is your deployment?
Not really sure at the moment because there's no specific dates with all the outcomes that are going on in the Middle East, but probably within 12 months, I'll be back.
Okay. Are you able to participate remotely while you're on deployment?
That's 100% sure, sir. And I've been talking with my higher-ups and informed them about that, and they're fully aware about that. And if there's any, like, chances I need to be in person, they will book me up live and come back to Massachusetts to be in person, to participate in any, like, relevant thing.
Okay. And presently, your application says that you're a resident of Kingston, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Well, you know, I'd say, I think you have some incredible skills, and if you are not the successful candidate, I would encourage you to reengage when you get back to stateside.
Sounds good, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for Mr. Hamzo? With that, if there's no other questions, I'll take the next candidate on the list,
Hi, and good evening, everyone. My name is Ben Urein. My wife and I moved to the town of Plymouth in 2022. My family's been in this area for a long time, and I guess my background is mostly in marine science, so I'm a marine geologist by training. And, you know, I have a pretty deep bench of experience with understanding climate change, carbon, carbon sequestration, and all of these other components that are associated with energy efficiency, what's kind of driving this push toward energy efficiency. And, you know, I think at this point, I'm interested in getting involved with local politics to try to make a difference. I have a two-year-old and a one-month-old at home right now, and so I kind of, I really believe in what, you know, believe in this, this idea of leaving the world better than we found it. And I think I've done a fair bit of research in my time in graduate school and undergraduate, kind of studying energy efficiency, studying carbon markets, and how we can kind of improve Plymouth's energy efficiency. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Urein? Is there, is there anything in particular that you would like to bring to the Energy Committee if you were to be appointed?
I think my experience, you know, understanding climate change and understanding, you know, some of these carbon trade-offs that we have with a lot of, you know, I've been reading a lot more recently, as I've been doing a lot of work on my own house and upgrading HVAC systems, about the Massachusetts 2050 goals for energy efficiency. And, you know, from a geologist's perspective, where I can look and see, you know, what the, the carbon cost of some of these efficiency goals are, i.e. with the, the carbon cost of extraction of lithium for batteries and whatnot, I think I'd bring a wide breadth of experience with, with that side of it.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. So there's two candidates for two, Mr. Bletzer?
I just have a question for the chairman.
Okay.
They're both qualified candidates. They're both qualified candidates, but Mr. Hamzo, is he, being a Kingston resident, is he, is he able to apply, not being a Plymouth resident?
So the town clerk has previously explained to us, and this came up some time ago with another committee, that we could have a non-resident appointed if we wanted to. It's a matter of preference, it's a possibility that we have. So I think it's worth considering whether we want to appoint a Kingston resident to a Plymouth Town Committee, but they are eligible to serve on a Plymouth Town Committee.
So, Mr. Hamzo, I think it'd be the best interest, because he's deployed, he's not, we're not sure when he's going to be back, and I wish I had said this to him when he was, I hope he's still listening online, because he comes from a good family, I know the family, and, but the fact that he's not going to be, he's not back in the States right now, we're not sure where he's going to be, and he's a Kingston resident presently, he's going to move to Plymouth, he said. I think we'd be better off holding off, and hopefully he comes before us again for another position, another committee, because he's definitely well-qualified. And again, I know the character, I know his family, so I would encourage him to come back, but I'm not ready to vote him for this position tonight, so.
Okay, all right. And if he were not appointed, he could, if there is another future opening for the Energy Committee, he could reapply.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. There are two candidates, there are two positions. I will take a motion either to vote as a slate, or we could, someone could nominate an individual candidate.
Oh, there is two positions. Excuse me, I'm kind of embarrassed, I missed that. I'm sorry, there is two positions?
There are.
Okay, under those circumstances, then I, actually, you know what? No, I'd still prefer just to vote for the one, I'm going to stand, just, just in case he's not able to make meetings, I prefer to just, just stick with the one candidate.
Okay. Mr. Golden?
Yeah, I share that opinion, and in light of that, I would like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Urein to the, to one of the two, three-year terms for the Energy Committee.
Okay, thank you. And as was demonstrated earlier in the evening, if we know in advance that two members of a four-member present board are not going to vote for something, it's not going to pass. So in that, with that in mind, I will second the nomination for Mr. Urein, and I will echo what Mr. Bletzer said earlier. We thank you for your service, Mr. Hamzo, but your current deployment, while we could work around that, the fact that you're also a Kingston resident further complicates things a bit, so we would just encourage you to focus on serving your country and staying safe for the time being. And when you return stateside, if you are back and if you find yourself in Plymouth, we encourage you to apply, but we do thank you for your interest. So it has been moved, it has been seconded, that we appoint Mr. Urein to one of the three-year terms on the Energy Committee. Do we have any discussion specific to Mr. Urein? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Bletzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, I vote yes. It is unanimous. Mr. Urein, congratulations, you have been appointed to fill one of the two, one of the three-year terms on the Energy Committee. Thank you. That brings us into the appointment for the Climate Action Net Zero Committee, otherwise known as CANS. We have a one-year term, and we have an applicant named David Johnson. Is Mr. Johnson present? He is. Mr. Johnson is approaching the microphone. Mr. Johnson, as with the other applicants, we have your application materials in our packet, but if you'd like to introduce yourself, and then we'll open it up to questions.
Sure. Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to address you regarding my candidacy for this position. I'm a recent transplant to Plymouth. I've been here for approximately two years, but I have a long history of public service. I have helped make change at the state level by partnering with the state of Rhode Island, where I previously lived, in order to build community connection between technology and the state to help improve the citizens' access to information. I've also built nonprofits, I built one of the first maker spaces in the state of Rhode Island. And I've traveled pretty extensively across the US, collecting information about ways to make improvements at the public level. Wherever I've lived in the past, I've done my best to participate and volunteer and to help whatever initiatives make sense to. My background in technology helps me identify complex projects, ways to simplify them in order to accelerate them and to leverage whatever is most innovative and cutting-edge. The Climate Action and Net Zero Committee plan thus far, I saw as a tremendous opportunity for me to help. There's a lot of mature strategy involved, and being a long-term thinker, I appreciate it for what it is and what it aims to achieve.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Johnson, any questions for Mr. Johnson? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Johnson, thank you for being here. Is there anything in particular that you hope to accomplish if you're added to the CANS Committee?
Sure. I saw a number of different opportunities for me to leverage my skill set. Some of the larger themes, one of the things I commonly do as part of my job is develop solutions based on not only interpersonal or overall complexity of technology or systems thinking, as it relates to how people will use something. As it relates to how we address climate change, et cetera, I see quite a bit of opportunity in how the CANS Committee is going about achieving some of their goals. is going about achieving some of their goals, in identifying ways to translate the overall benefit to the public. So when people are looking at a plan, or looking at ways that they, their tax dollars might be spent, one of the biggest questions to ask is, what does, how does that benefit me directly? I do this on a daily basis in my work, and leveraging very simple analysis of return on investment or value assessments is a common thing that we do, and I see quite a bit of opportunity for me to apply that here. Other areas, one of the things that I think is on everybody's minds these days is leveraging artificial intelligence to identify ways that they can do what they do better. One of those things, as a former analyst, that I've been leveraging AI for lately, is by crunching large quantities of information to better understand it. I've analyzed basically the entirety of all the meeting minutes for the CANS Committee into when it first began, as well as other committees, before choosing this one in particular to, that I thought would have the best fit. So leveraging those kinds of technologies, my analysis background, and thinking about things from multiple different perspectives and systems is one of the things that I would like to, or a few of the things I'd like to apply to this committee.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none. I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion to, well, actually, I do have a follow-up question, if you wouldn't mind. It says here that we have a one, one-year term and a one, two-year term.
It does.
Would you prefer to have the longer or the shorter term?
Considering that, I was thinking about that when I read the agenda item. What are the implications of that aside from commitment?
No implications, other than the length of time you'd serve.
Okay. Let's make it two.
Excellent. If there are no other questions for the candidate, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we nominate Mr. Johnson to a two-year term.
Okay.
I'll second that, and can I just make a comment before I vote?
All right. So it has been moved, it has been seconded, and for discussion, Mr. Bletzer.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that you reaffirm what I've said about Plymouth and the, how lucky we are to have the quality of volunteers and the experience and, you know, your resume speaks for itself, just like our last two candidates. So I appreciate that, and we'll be glad to have you, so.
Thank you.
I'll vote yes, if you call for the vote.
Well, it's, it's good to know how you're leaning.
Just trying to help you.
Any other discussion? All right. Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Bletzer, sticking with that, yes?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes as well. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Congratulations.
Trying to be a vice chairman.
All right. So that brings us into our next item, which is the Water Street Sewer Interceptor informational presentation, and we are joined by First DPW Director Bill Coyle. Mr. Coyle?
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Coyle, DPW Director. It's been a while since we've been here before you regarding the Water Street Sewer Interceptor project. Also with me this evening, we have Doug Pennard, Sewer Superintendent, is here, Ziad Carey, who's the Senior Principal with Apex Engineering, which is formerly Environment Department, and also Andrew Grotta, the Project Manager, who's also with Apex. As most of you are probably aware, we, Northern Construction and Apex completed the installation of the 30-inch sewer interceptor back in May, and at that time, the sewer interceptor was put into service and is currently functioning along Water Street. But in as part of that completion of the project, we've been evaluating the as-built information. And during that process, we've determined that there is some defective work on the northern end of the project, that we believe Northern Construction needs to come back and repair that area. So with that, I'll turn this over to Ziad to probably go over in a little more detail what that work may consist of, and I'll, at this time, turn it over to Ziad. Then we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Bill. Again, Ziad Carey with Apex Companies. So this project, a little bit of background on this. Oh, there you go. Just give you a little bit of background. I think Bill covered a lot of it. Just a little bit of an update where we're at today and what the next steps are going to be. So the initial interceptor is a 30-inch precast concrete pipe that was built in 1969, well, over 55 years old, and it has two degrees, two 45-degree bends along the alignment, which makes it very tough to assess and look what the condition of the interceptor is. This is what triggered the design of relocating the interceptor from the harbor into Water Street. So we designed this project, and we bid it in 2022 in January, and then back again in April, based on lack of funding. And Northern Construction was the lowest eligible bidder. The bid was received at $4.476 million. They pre-purchased the materials so they could get into Water Street by January and complete the work before the summer season. And so they pre-purchased the pipe, and the initial contract was due to expire on June 30th, 2023, and it was later extended through June 30th of 2024. During the work, back in March 2023, they had some issues with dewatering, so the, the project was paused for about two months, was put on hold. And since then, we got back in May, and then we completed the work. So effectively, the, as Bill mentioned, the interceptor is running, is online here, and it's been online since April 2024. Keep in mind, the interceptor that's in the intercoastal is still active as well. It's not active, but it's still there as a redundant pipe. So moving on to... Again, as Bill mentioned, during the as-built and looking at the project conditions, somewhere, this is the, the roundabout up here, so we put a manhole up here. This is the segment that we feel is out of compliance. So there is a little bit of a dip in the pipeline for a gravity sewer that's running almost flat. It is prudent to bring the grades up to, you know, design grades. So there's some dips in the pipeline along this segment, based on some CCTV inspection and some research that we did since the interceptor was put into service, and that manhole had dipped slightly below design grade. So we asked Northern Construction to come back and address the situation. So we asked them to put a revised plan to delineate the work, and then come up with a dewatering plan to fix the manhole and the pipeline. So once we have that information from them, we're looking to, sorry, go on the back, background here. Once we have the intersection, the, the plan from them, we're looking to get a public outreach, talk to the business owners, and discuss the plan, how to fix the pipeline. And then, once the pipeline is fixed, we'll do final paving and do a project closeout.
I have a question.
Mr. Bletzer, question?
So, so you're waiting for, they're coming up with a plan, Northern, or?
It's a schedule plan.
How long, how long will this work take, do you, do you believe?
It's hard to tell. It's about, it could be anywhere from, so the line segment that is in question could be somewhere between 10 to 300 feet, and a manhole.
Worst-case scenario, how much time?
It's really the, the work itself shouldn't take very long, just the prep work. If they have to put sheeting in the ground, if they have to do supportive excavation, that's the...
Get more specific. We're, we're at seasonal, so...
No, understood.
And last year, well, just where I'm coming from, is last year was tough. And I'd love to be able to have an answer for the, if we're going to tell these businesses. I'd like to give them as best we can the correct information, so we don't tell them one thing and it turns out to be something else. And hopefully, the timeframe doesn't go into a, a summer season. I mean, I'm just, because it, we, we, we don't want another disaster like that for the businesses, because it's, it's already been a tough winter. It's been a very tough winter for a lot of the restaurants, and a lot of the businesses, not just restaurants, all the businesses down there. So if we can come up with a timeframe, and then reach out, as you say, do a reach out, have a meeting, however we're going to do it, I, I trust our town manager, assistant town manager, to set that up, and, and get the businesses there, and we can talk to them. And I think they already know it's coming, I believe. I think, and the work you're talking about is right in front of Mamma Mia's, is that where it is?
It's, it's going to be slightly south of the roundabout and towards Mamma Mia.
Yep.
It's, this is like, this manhole right there that's opposite Mamma Mia. So we're hoping that kind of cut it a little bit shorter from there.
Right, and we already know.
And we had initially talked about, we, we understand the, you know, the seasonal and the business owners and everything else. We had hoped for them to commit a mobilization by end of February, and then do the work in the bulk of the winter. So just kind of wrap it up before May, before April.
Oh, really? You think you...
We're hoping that, yeah.
Okay. I'm not going to hold you to that, but if you get it done by the end of April, that would be fantastic. So, I mean, it has to get done, so. And this will be it, and then you can come in and pave, finish, fix, drive and strip.
The rest of the project is paved. The, the only thing that's left is the mill, the, the entire length, which is about 1,600 feet, curb to curb, and then do an overlay.
Listen, I understand this had to get done, and I'll tell you right now, if this didn't get fixed and that burst, that was, that whole waterfront was, would have been a disaster down there. And that's what, that's what I try to tell the businesses. I said, it was a little inconvenience, but it could have been a huge inconvenience. So, all right, great. Thank you for the information.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several questions. So we have this map in front of us, or, it's not a map, it's a, an image of the, the work area. Do you, do you folks have this as well?
This was a concept, but this is going to get, that's why it's not included in this presentation, because it's going to get much smaller.
So my question was going to be, is this orange zone, does that represent everything that's going to be torn up?
No, it's just the lay-down area.
Excellent. I'm glad to hear that. I do see that there, there are daily closures that are needed, coming onto Water Street from the roundabout. Is that going to still be part of the plan?
Wasn't going to be full closure. We always maintain one lane of traffic going from north to south.
Okay.
And that will be the case moving forward as well.
I also see that there's a staging area in the Memorial Hall parking lot. Looks like we're going to lose some 30 parking spaces.
I think we will have to.
We'll also be losing some additional parking spaces on the water side. Is there any, is there any way you can tighten that footprint up?
Based on what we saw the last couple times, we, you know, we did the last two construction seasons, it's, it's very tough, just the size of the equipment, the equipment needed for dewatering. I know they, they worked with us, Northern Construction, they're not here today, but they worked, and we always held weekly meetings, trying to minimize the impact on, on the footprint and the residents and the business owners. You know, they're willing to, to work, and, I mean, we try the best we can to, to make it happen, but...
I'll defer to Mr. Bletzer if he has a follow-up on that question.
No, I, I just have information on that about how that worked. It worked well. Once we had a meeting down there, Doug, you were there, we met with the Viscrellas, Ramboldis, and we encouraged the construction workers to park on one side of the parking lot. Now, PGDC gave free parking, April 1st is, but they, it was free parking in that area there, and we let them use part of Memorial Drive, so they're closest to the restaurants and the, and the businesses down there. So if you can do that same plan, that worked.
Doug Pennard, the wastewater superintendent. Yes, it would be similar to what we did the last time.
Exactly.
I work with Desmond at Park Plymouth, and there'll be a, a smaller area in the Memorial Hall parking lot, minimize some of the parking on Water Street. We'll probably also look into what we also did with Memorial Drive and make it a two-way, to help access for those restaurants.
Right. And what, and what, if the, if the, instead of shutting the, if the roundabout gets shut off, if the road has to get closed...
Yep.
For a short time.
Yep.
Then you can at least, you let them come into Memorial Hall, so they can get in there.
That's right.
Which was good. You moved it.
Yep. And it'll be very similar, yeah.
Took up a couple of meetings down, and it worked up. You guys were very cooperative, and the businesses were happy with that.
Yeah, we try to accommodate as best we can.
They understood it is what it is, so, thank you.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Bletzer, for the clarification, and you as well, Doug. My last question is, who's paying for this work?
So, in the contract, we held $1.6 million from pay in Northern Construction, and we communicated with them that the money would be released when this project's fixed. This is the value of what we think it is to, to address that issue.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you for the informational update.
Thank you.
That brings us into Article 13, Article 13 for the Spring Annual Town Meeting. In relation to capital improvements, we are joined by Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance.
Thank you. So this is Article 13, which is our annual capital projects article request for town meeting. So this is for the annual town meeting. The Capital Improvements Committee met on January 13th and ranked all of the projects that had been submitted by the departments that are being recommended by the town manager. And this memo and the spreadsheets that I provided you recommends what the funding sources should be for these projects. And the spreadsheets, one of them ranked, one of the spreadsheets was in order of rankings, so there was 47 general fund projects and five enterprise fund projects. The 47 general fund were ranked, and then the second spreadsheet that I provided to you sort of sorts it by town meeting. So we have an annual town meeting, which is this Article 13, so the memo includes all the funding sources for Article 13, and then there'll be a separate memo for the special town meeting requests that'll come later.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Barrett? If no one else. Ms. Barrett, so I think in recent years, we've sort of adjusted to, rather than sort of a list of everything we'd like, we've restricted us at the forefront to what we can afford, and then...
Yeah, so I think working with the departments on the 10-year plan, and having them identify, you know, their needs and in what year, sort of to implement those needs, I think has worked out very well. And I think the departments, we noticed this year that, in that, you know, the 26-year of funding for projects, there were only a couple of projects in working with the departments that didn't seem ready to go yet, so we, you know, moved those over into future years.
Yep.
But, and I think the departments are working very well about, you know, trying to strategically plan those things out, like the five to 10 years.
Okay. So, and now, it's, what's, the amount of projects are presented that are within the budget that the town has to actually fund them?
Yes.
And then just assess whether, with the funding available, whether it's still a good use of the, as opposed to in some years past, when it was, these are all the things we'd like, and then we had to figure out the ranking and then the money.
Right, right.
Right. Okay. All right. I, I think that changing it in that way has been a, a smart move and makes sense, and certainly, I know the CIC Committee spends a couple full days here going over, throughout the course of the year, so...
Yeah.
That's a, that's a significant commitment. So I appreciate their work and, and the work of all, of yourself, and certainly all the department and division heads as well in getting that together. Any, any other questions for Ms. Barrett? All right. If there are none, I would solicit a motion to include Article 13 on the warrant and recommend town meeting approve it.
So moved.
All right. Mr. Golden has moved. Mr. Bletzer has seconded. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Bletzer?
Yes.
All right, myself, yes, and Mr. Golden?
Yes.
All right, it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to Article twenty-seven, which is the first of, uh, a couple of citizens' petitioned articles that we will be hearing this evening. That is a citizens' petition in relation to a zoning bylaw amendment entitled "Light Industrial to Mixed Commerce." We are being joined by the presenter, who is coming to the podium now to tell us about the merits of Article twenty-seven, as he sees it. He's acquiring additional persuasive tools.
So Lee Hartman, Director of Planning and Development, I'm going to start this. Although it's a petitioned article, it's a zoning change, the planning board's required to hold a public hearing, they did that a couple weeks ago. Planning Board reviewed this and voted unanimously five oh to support it. So just to go through a little, we'll orient you to where we are. So as we look at this, this is Route three, heading south. This is, and I still like to call it the new Route forty-four, which is twenty years old. And then, uh, this is Colony Place, this is Commerce Way. And the property we're talking about and we're looking at is right here. So as we zoom in a little bit, we hope. Hey, I'm not zooming in, Jade. Up, there you go. This is not a happy machine today.
Very squirrel-friendly project.
So if you need all that, you're in trouble.
You are.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
It's paid by the board. Yeah, is that true?
Presenters usually have fewer tri-boards.
So Jade, maybe we just go down, just if we can't go to the full screen, just go to the next slide. Ow.
Do you wanna stick 'em down?
It's not moving, though.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's, so now, and again, this is not working so well here, so this is the site, as we get a little closer, why don't you hit the next one, I just was zooming in. Uh, so again, so this is the site, it's the T.L. Edwards, it used to be the site, that's good for, for now. Um, it's the, the gravel processing facility that's at the corner, so this is Cherry Street right here, this is Commerce Way, convenience store, car wash over here, the new Roundtree, Hyundai gas station here. And so this is the property here. Um, and just go to the one more slide, and I think we'll be good. So the request here, it's, it's about fifty-four acres, and the property owner's looking to rezone this from light industrial to mixed commerce. And, um, what they've indicated to me, and we've had several discussions over the last two years, is that they're not interested in making this available to yet another forty B, they'd rather have this go to some kind of commercial development. And so they're looking to do a zoning change to go to mixed commerce from light industrial. Mixed commerce is a zone that allows for most of the industrial uses that exist in light industrial, the big difference is it allows for retail. So although I think all of us agree that there's plenty of retail in Plymouth, and maybe we don't need more, I would argue that when you look at this site, this is off of Route forty-four, the gate, one of the gateways to the town of Plymouth, and people are welcomed by this gravel facility, that allowing retail use here is a far better option than the uses that are here now, and a better option than having this go to yet another forty B. The property owner's never talked about forty B, I, he has indicated to me that that's not his interest, so that's good to just leave it right there. Yeah, and then that's just, I just was trying to give a view of it, but she's cranky today, so we'll leave it. Um, so again, it's this piece of property they're looking to rezone. You'll see in the, at the property line, there's a couple of outpieces, those are lands owned by the town of Kingston in Plymouth, so that's why they're excluded. And again, if you look at the uses, this still allows for most of those high-tech industrial uses that you have in the light industrial zone, it just simply adds the retail use to the uses that could be allowed. Retail in this zone is a special permit, too. So just by doing this doesn't get them retail, they would still have to go to the zoning board of appeals, it's a four out of five vote to get that special permit. So this is really just the first stop. And I would just close by saying, in my opinion, as we look at this property, there are three options. One is this existing non-conforming use can continue to operate, which they're legally allowed to do. The second is, we can allow for this zoning change and have hopefully a mix of commercial uses as well as retail. Or three, we could do nothing, and in my opinion, if this property owner can't figure out something else to do, it would most likely to go, go to forty B. So again, I think the retail is a piece to be added, but it's a good option for this site, and I think anything's better than what we have as our gateway to the town of Plymouth currently. You have anything to add?
Um, not a whole lot. I think Lee pretty much captured the essence of this. I can give you a little background on this. This property is owned by T.L. Edwards, uh, Mr. Terry Edwards, who is eighty years old, has owned this, purchased this from, um-
Landers.
Neil Landers, twelve years ago. And, um, the project right now, um, so, so Mr. Edwards owns, um, a large plant in Avon, which is the major plant, and at this stage of his life, he's looking to consolidate, so he wants to move this operation to Avon to consolidate it with the operation there. The, um, uh, the additional background, uh, that's not one of my slides, no. It's okay, it's nice, but it's not one of mine. Um, it's, um, anyway, he's got seven children in the business. Um, uh, he still works forty hours a week doing this, doing this work. There's, there are a lot of pluses to this particular project. Most of you can, if you're not familiar with it, you can see the photographs I've got on the tri-boards that are falling down, but in any event, um, everybody knows the area, um, it's very, very close to the Commerce Way project, um, where all the retail and mixed commerce use areas are, and this would far benefit the area way more than having the additional construction and material, um, operation that is currently existing. At the present time, there's probably about, on average, about a hundred truckloads a day of sand and gravel being hauled in and hauled out of there. Not all Edwards, but he sells to other contractors as well. So we're talking about replacing those hundred truckloads with a commercial business. Discussions have been held with a number of, um, retail operations such as Costco, um, and others. I can't give anybody a commitment to what's happening, cause we need to get through the, the zoning change in order to make that happen, but, um, that is the projected idea at this particular point in time, is to completely change that particular operation from what it is right now and bring in something totally different. He will not sell this to another company to do the same thing, he has no desire to do that. Um, as I said earlier, um, his goal is to consolidate this with the Avon, um, plant and, um, make that far more economically, um, sensible for him, and at the same time, uh, capture, you know, the retail, um, business that will be much more attractive here, here in Plymouth. Um, there is another angle to this, which I'm not sure that everybody's aware of, but at present, um, because, um, T.L. Edwards is classified as a manufacturing corporation pursuant to eight fifty CMR, fifty-eight point two, the town of Plymouth realizes no personal property taxes from about the ten million dollars worth of equipment that is on that site. So if this zoning change goes through, um, whatever comes in there will not be this, and it will be subject to personal property tax, whether it's a large box store, whether it's some other form of retail, but the town of Plymouth will realize far more income from personal property tax than what they're getting right now, which is zero. So, um, I think there's a lot of incentive here to, um, accept this particular change and move forward with this as a, and, and again, it's, it, it really fits much better with the environment in that particular area than what's currently there. Um, and just so that everybody's clear, so there's two particular Edwards sites, there is one on the left side, sort of just past the mobile station on the left, that's not the one we're talking about, it's the one on the right, um, and that is the one that does the crushing and processing and those kind of things, and that's where the truckloads are coming in and out of, and pretty good-sized volume. So I think for most of the people in that area, this will be a much more attractive use of the property, uh, it benefits the area, the citizens, and obviously, as I just suggested, the town. So any questions, I'm happy to try to address.
Mr. Bletzer, have a question?
No, go ahead, you can, I have-
Okay. Okay, Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Sims, thank you for joining us here tonight. Um, the, um, are you in, so I had heard that Costco was, uh, gonna be, um, possibly, uh, looking at this, this particular site. Are you involved in that negotiation to bring Costco, or will you be, or any other organization that comes to town?
It's really at the formative stages, Mr. Golden, so I can't really comment on potential suitors for this particular spot, but I believe that when we get to that point, uh, Mr. Edwards is my client, so I will probably be involved in some negotiation at some point when we find the right and most appropriate use for the site. At this point, we don't have any commitments from anybody, cause we've got a number of steps to go through, even if, you know, we were, had contingencies in place, but we don't wanna lead anything on, so.
Uh, my wife would be extraordinarily pleased if you could find some way to make this a Trader Joe's, so.
We'll push really hard.
If you could give them a call, we'd greatly appreciate it. Um, uh, so just to be clear, uh, would Mr. Edwards be ceasing his gravel operation in Plymouth, or is he just seeding this portion of that property?
So, the one that we're talking about right now will cease. Um, he will not sell to another, uh, entity which does the exact same thing. Um, the one across the street is not gonna change. Um, yeah, that's totally different, it's, it's an asphalt, um, plant, so, um, this is very, very different. Um, but yeah, this one will cease if the zoning change goes through, um, as anticipated and hoped for.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Bletzer?
So Bill, let me, to be clear, so, so, so we're gonna close the, the sand mine down, is that the plan? And if this goes through, we'll be able to bring some, uh, some-
Yes.
Some box, some box retip, maybe an anchor, something that would bring, and, and the significance of that, I believe, would bring more business to Plymouth. People would come, if it's the particular store like a Costco, and I don't know, you can't confirm that, but the business that would bring to other businesses in that area, have you, have you thought about that?
Yeah, of course. I mean, you know, something like that particular entity that you mentioned, or something similar, will obviously attract commerce, um, and, and a number of the things that will be attractive to all the local businesses within that area. So that's a hu- huge consideration from Mr. Edwards. Um, and as I said, he will not sell this to somebody doing the same operations what he's doing. He's gonna close this and move it to Avon, and, um, hopefully, um, if the zoning law goes through and this becomes the MC district, then obviously the restrictions and what can be put there will be very, very different.
So this sounds like a no-brainer. Mr. Edwards, obviously, has done his homework in what Plymouth wants and needs, and, uh, you know, he knows people, you know, the, the forty B stuff, and even, even residential over there would be, any kind of residential might be a problem. Uh, I'll tell you what, I, I don't wanna see any more, uh, apartment complexes, that's not what I wanna see. I, I wanna see some kind of commercial, uh, tax revenue coming out of there. And, and we, Lee was there when we, a year and a half ago, till we sat on that parking lot, that white building there, where Hyundai, the new Hyundai, Roundtree, the Roundtrees invested all that money, uh, on, on that site to put, I was at the groundbreaking, and it wasn't much to look at then, it was just a groundbreaking, and I remember looking out across the street and saying, "Wow, hopefully this is the start of something here, some kind of development here with, for commercial tax revenue." And then when it was completed, at the ribbon cutting, it was, I, I looked, it was, just turned out to be a beautiful building, and I looked over and I could see the, the Edwards land. It's all cleaned up, and, you know, they, you know, they, I think they were cleaning it up, a lot of it was far Roundtree, cause of all the dust, and I looked out, it looked so much better, and I, I said, "Wow, I'd love to see someday in my lifetime, you know, some, some development there," never thinking that there could ever be a Costco or something like that. That is, that would be huge if we can make, have, get this happen. We keep talking about, you know, and I know it's, it technically it's retail, but the revenue, the revenues that would bring in to all the businesses in that area, and the businesses that it would attract, too. Uh, it's, it's just, if we can get this accomplished, this would be great. So get in the zone, I hope it goes through town meeting, I'm, I'm all for it, it's, it's, this is what I've been waiting for, you know, for a few years now.
Well, with, with the support of the board, we have the unanimous support of the planning board, um, we've had no opposition from anybody, uh, along the way, and hopefully, when we get to town meeting in April, um, with the support of everybody that's, uh, you know-
And one last thing, Bill, is the traffic. Because of the easy, it, it, whatever, you, you, you're gonna change anything, obviously you're right off of four ninety-five, you're right off of, uh, you know, you're close to Route three and all that, but, but that area is kind of congested areas, have you got plans to maybe, uh, bring another ramp or anything from there?
It's obviously too soon for that kind of stuff. Mr. Bletzer, the, um, we don't know who's the eventual purchaser, sir is gonna be, and what they wanna do, but it's a large parcel, as you can see, it's a very large parcel-
Thirty-four acres?
...with lots of opportunity for parking and for access and egress, which will give whoever it is that comes in there, um, the opportunity to present to this board and every other board that's involved in this, um, a very, very well-conceived planned design to alleviate traffic, but still provide good access to their site, they got plenty of room there, um, so I think that instead of trucks rolling in and out of there, yes, there'll be traffic, but it'll be well-designed, um, and that'll be down the road a piece. Once we get the, uh, the town meeting to approve this to the MC, it'll be, um, it'll be the first gateway towards that opportunity for, for us to, you know, convert and sell the property to somebody who can, you know, conceive a good project for that spot.
You're sure Mr. Hartman's happy? He's smiling, okay, great, okay.
There are a lot of people that will be.
Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Sims, the, the mine that's there, or the processing facility, I think it was described earlier, so that, that sand and gravel's from other places, not from that location, right? So it's being brought in there, and then it's being, uh, processed into relevant piles and then redistributed, is that, is that-
Yes, Mr. King, I, I'm not intricately involved with the operation there, but, um, as I said, you know, they process materials there, and it comes and goes, so, um, there are a number of contractors who purchase the materials, and that's probably represents approximately fifty percent of the truck volume that comes in and out of there, the rest would be land, I mean, um, um, you know, the own operation, and, as opposed to the sub-contracting and, and selling components, so it's, um, it's about fifty-fifty, and we average the truckloads based upon the time of year, like, you know, during the course of the year, you know, you probably will see probably fifty percent more during the, um, you know, the warmer months, right now it's very quiet, but-
Sure.
-as projects conceive and get elevated during spring, summer, then there's more, but it averages, as we figured out, about a hundred a day.
And with fifty being trucks bringing material in, and fifty or so taking it out?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. Coming in, having it processed, and then hauling some stuff out as well, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from members of the board? All right. Hearing and seeing none. So this is a citizen's petitioned article, the first of two that we're hearing tonight. Citizens petitioned articles are included in the warrant, whether the select board likes it or not. So our vote on this is whether to recommend this to town meeting or not. Do we have a motion to recommend town meeting approve Article 27?
I'd like to make that motion, that we recommend the town meeting Article 27.
All right. Mr. Blitzer has moved that we recommend town meeting approve Article 27.
Second.
Mr. Golden has seconded. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Sims, and as always...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Thank you, and as always, thank you, Mr. Hartman. Do you want your trifolds here?
No, I'm going to come get them.
Okay, okay. We look forward to that. That brings us into Article 28, that being a citizen's petition, a proposed bylaw amendment related to public comment. We are joined by lead petitioner and town meeting member George McKay. George?
Yes, hi. Thank you for inviting me to tell you about Article 28, which will be at the spring town meeting. I have in front of you on the first slide the wording of the article, and I just want to read it for the record. We're going to create a new paragraph in the bylaws of the town. It's going to be paragraph 17313. It's going to say, "Each precinct caucus shall have the provision in its agenda for public comment. At the discretion of the chair of the precinct, public comment may be made at one time or interspersed with presentations at the meeting. Public comments cannot be censored. Public comments are simply comments and not debatable. A minimum of two minutes should be allowed for each public comment speaker, but may be allowed a longer period at the discretion of the chair. The sequence of public comment speakers shall be, number one, precinct residences; number two, Plymouth Town residences; and three, any other member of the public." It sounds very straightforward, but I wanted to just share with you some of the history that brings me to you tonight. Back last year, at the fall town meeting, we had a lot of discussion about the charter and what it was going to look like, and the charter review committee had many presentations and many proposals. One of the changes they wanted to insert in response to, and this is their quote, "Citizens' complaints about town meeting members not listening to them." And they proposed a change in the charter to increase the number of required precinct meetings, which are now at three to five. As I mentioned before, I'm the precinct chair of Precinct 8, which is Cedarville. We have the mandatory three required precinct meetings, but we don't have any additional ones usually, except by exception, because we have a very strong Cedarville steering committee, and they have monthly meetings, and they usually cover everything that the local citizens want them to cover, so that as a precinct with precinct members, we feel that that covers what the people in that area need. So I was very much opposed to that language in the charter, that the requirement would be five. And I remember in this room, I asked, "What's the enforcement mechanism if we don't?" And I was told there was no enforcement mechanism. Nobody would put me in jail if I didn't have four and five as precinct meetings. So as a result of that, I had an article at the town meeting which changed the charter to read a requirement of three and additional ones at the discretion of the chair. And we'll get into what happened there. Concurrently with this going on, Aldonado submitted a citizen's petition to require all precinct meetings to provide for public comment. The next slide shows what happened. Mr. Donado's citizen petition was denied by the town moderator for a technical issue that it was out of order. And what Aldonado did before he got the citizen's petition out and signed by people, he didn't specify where he was going to put that as either a bylaw or a charter change, but he did get a number of people to agree that precincts, when they held their meetings, should allow for public comment, and it should be mandatory. I had my change approved by the town moderator to change the charter commission's language from five down to two additional ones and have that struck, to make it at the option of the chair. At the last minute, knowing that Aldonado's citizen's petition was denied, I tried to add it as an addition to what I was proposing, and I tried to do that at the last minute, and it was ruled out of order by the town moderator. So what happened at the town meeting was that we approved my language to say two additional meetings were not required, but additional meetings were required at the determination of the precinct chair, and that passed successfully. It passed successfully without the comment of public comments being required, so that was unresolved. And as a summary of what I was going to do at the town meeting, I said, "We'll address that in the spring town meeting." So where we are today is we modified the citizen's petition to add the language to create this as an addition to the bylaw. So that's why the language, as I showed you in the beginning, shows that it's a bylaw addition and what paragraph it's going to be as part of the new bylaw. When I started researching this, I was very surprised that under the open meeting laws in Massachusetts, there's not a requirement for public comment. I know that this board has a policy that allows for public comment. Almost every important committee in town has a requirement for public comment, except that the precincts are not required to have public comment, even though 99% of the cases, when precincts have their meeting, they do allow for public comment. So all I'm asking as this citizen's petitioned article is that we make it mandatory for every single precinct meeting that is held in Plymouth, that they put in their agenda, they allow for public comment. So that's it. So I would like your support.
All right. Questions, Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, George, for presenting here. Can you go all the way back to the first slide that has the bylaw language? I'm in support of this. I just would highlight in the final paragraph, I think where you list, in the final sentence, where you list the order of public comment, I think the words residences should be residents with a T. A residence would be a dwelling, a resident would be a person. Would that change? I'll support.
Okay. Well, I'll take that under consideration. This has been reviewed by everybody to date, so I don't even know what it would take to make a change at this point.
At the end, one precinct residences, that would refer to houses, yes. Mr. Golden?
Could I ask a follow-up?
You may.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the town manager and the assistant town manager, is it possible to change that at this point?
Yeah, we were just communicating. I think that this could be, this change could be made at town meeting.
So someone would need to make a motion to amend this language?
Right, right. It could not be changed now, that I do know, but I do think on the floor at town meeting, they could make that change.
That is correct.
Can we make the motion if no one else on town meeting floor does?
You could. Members of the select board have all the abilities of a town meeting member, except the ability to vote at town meeting.
Okay. I prefer town meeting to do it themselves.
Wouldn't we all? Mr. Blitzer?
Just before it gets corrected, it's a mistake. Correct it before it gets there.
Yep. Well, because it's a citizen's petition, the language can't be changed prior to...
It's a mistake. Residents, residences.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. McKay?
Mr. King.
Questions?
Yes, just so, so all you're looking for on this is just that they have the public comments.
Say that, say that again, please.
Just the public comments at all precincts. That's all you're looking for.
Yes, sir.
That's my question. Can I make some comments, or are we going to wait for that?
We're going to wait for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd love comments.
All right. I have a question. So, Mr. McKay, what's the enforcement mechanism for this?
Basically, there still is none, except for the embarrassment of the chair that does not list the public comment. Right now, occasionally, what happens, and this is the reason it's on the table, occasionally precincts have meetings where the chair decides that they don't want to hear an opposite opinion from what the chair thinks. And so historically in the past, when that happens, you'll see an agenda published for that precinct which does not include provision for public comment. That precinct chair that wants to keep the public out of the discussion still has liberty to do that, except now he would violate one of the bylaws, but he's not going to be arrested. He won't go to jail.
All right. Mechanically, so it says a minimum of two minutes should be allowed for each public comment speaker. So I know when I've gone to meetings throughout the community, and I try to make it to precinct caucuses whenever I'm able to do so, I have, in addition to the select board, some other assignments as part of the select board, so I can't make it to all of them, but I try and make it to the ones that I can. Sometimes a particular issue brings out a lot of folks, and there's value in having folks in the room, but I've been to some precinct caucuses, for example, that have 30 or so folks that are there to talk about a specific issue. I'm not saying it's necessarily a bad thing, but if you had, say, 30 or 40 people that were present, if each of them is required to have two minutes of public comment, mechanically, that would mean an hour or more of public comment, in theory, some of which would be very duplicative. Again, could be value in that, having people be heard, but I think having gone to a lot of meetings with a lot of public comment at them, after a certain amount of public comments, you kind of get the sense of what people are there to talk about, and the points have already been made, and then you've still got 30 more speakers coming up sometimes. So...
Well, if I can just interject, I think the difference between what you said and what this says is this says a minimum of two minutes should be allowed. It doesn't say required, which you said was required.
Well...
So it's allowed. I took, I took a look at every single committee that has public comments now in the town of Plymouth, and I took a look at what other people are doing, and I made a compromise decision. Some people allow three minutes.
Yes.
Some people allow one minute.
Right.
But, so this was a minimum of two should be allowed, and it can be extended longer. And I think, if I remember correctly, the select board allows three minutes.
That's correct.
So this was a compromise. You know, in the situation you just mentioned, if you're in a situation at the select board and you have 30 people that want to speak, 30 times three minutes is a long time, as you just pointed out.
Sure is. But I do think the select board, being the executive branch of the government, even though 30 people want to speak for three minutes, would be a long evening, I think that's sort of to be expected, that that's going to happen sometimes on particularly controversial issues. Precinct caucuses are really often to accomplish specific tasks, like going through the town meeting warrant, sometimes which contains a number of articles, all in one evening. And, like, for example, I know, not to get into it, but I know that this, aspects of this came out of some debate and discussion at a precinct 17. One of the caucuses that I went to that had a lot of folks there were, at various points in the process, upset about a particular town meeting article that was before, that was taking place in precinct 17 at the time, but they were also reviewing, at some of these meetings, or hoping to review, the rest of the town meeting warrant as well. And going through the whole warrant can take three or four hours at some of these caucuses. So if you did have a situation where there were 30 people to talk about a specific issue for two minutes each, and that's an hour, that does take up a lot of the oxygen at that meeting. And again, there could be a benefit to that, but I think the collateral consequence of that and how the other issues on the agenda that evening would be affected should also be considered as part of that. So I just wanted to... Do you have anything else you did answer in some regards? Do you have anything else you'd like to say in response to that?
Well, I think I agree with you 100%, and my suggestion is I would like to get this on the floor at town meeting and let the precinct members discuss what you're discussing. I think two is a number we ought to put on the table. That's it.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion to recommend town meeting approve Article 28?
So moved.
Mr. Golden has moved.
Second for discussion.
Mr. Blitzer has seconded. And discussion, Mr. Blitzer?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll tell you what the punishment will be, is Facebook, Plymouth Independent, possibly WATD, the media, because people will be up in arms if this becomes a law and somebody violates that. They're going to be subject to exactly what we're subject to. And while I'm on that, I think it's sad that we even need an article to have this done, because they should, residents should be able to come to their, to their precinct caucus there and be able to voice their opinions. They should be able to comment. I can't believe that they're not allowed to do that, so...
I couldn't believe it either, but I went through historically...
Mr. McKay, we are in discussion. So I appreciate your enthusiasm, but Mr. Blitzer?
So my statement is all residents should be heard. Town meeting members should be held to the same standards that the select board is. And we hear about transparency, that's a word I hear all the time, yet the same people that use that word, when it pertains to them, that all of a sudden it doesn't seem to really matter that much. So I think Mr. Donato has a great point. You're making points tonight. Be heard, okay? One chairman is something, can't tell the residents they can't speak. And so this bylaw should go through. And my opinion on the minutes, I think, I think the chairman of the, should look out at the room and say, "Good night, folks. It's going to be, we've got a lot of people there. Let's hold it down to maybe one minute tonight, okay? And then there might be a night, we've got our two amigos right here. You guys can talk all you want, because we, you know..." I'm just saying to you, you know, it just, just look at the room. I don't think, it should be, you know, I don't mind having the discretion of a chairman, maybe you can talk about that, you know, if somebody can look at the room and decide. That's what, that's what our chairman does, you know? And sometimes he lets people speak longer, and I think that's how it should be, but absolutely, there should be public comment at all, at public meetings like this. No question about it. No question about it, or, you know, precinct meetings, so I hope, I hope this passes.
Thank you, Mr. Bledser. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I have my own. I, I will say, just from a managing a docket perspective, I think the language, a minimum of two minutes should be allowed for each public comment speaker, but may be allowed for longer period discretion of the chair. I personally would recommend excising a minimum time because while it's been suggested by the presenter as well as by Mr. Bledser that another time could be enforced or allowed at a particular meeting, the language says a minimum of two minutes should be allowed. So if you're gonna, if you're going to put it in the bylaw, then you should be compli- if you're going to comply with the bylaw, you're going to comply with the totality of the bylaw, which would be if there are thirty people and they want to talk, they each get two minutes and that's, that's an hour. Whether speakers five through thirty say the same thing as speaker one through five, they'd still each get two minutes. In a, in a lot of these other meetings where it's more organic and there's not that specific time limit, people would say things like, uh, you know, "Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add?" Or, um, you know, uh, just, "Is there any, anything we haven't heard before?" So that there isn't that level of, because people in the audience can certainly agree without getting up and speaking for two minutes. They can indicate from nodding heads, raising hands, things of that nature that they agree with the expressions made by the prior speakers. And then the other items that are on the docket could be dealt with. Nevertheless, it is not a hill that I am prepared to die on, so I will allow town meeting members that are going to sit through those caucuses to determine whether those two minutes of their lives per speaker are, um, something that they want to preserve so they can deal with the other items on the docket or whether they would like, and the discretion to make their own choices on that issue. But that is my only, that is a reservation that I have, just knowing how some things come out from sometimes. Mr. Bledser, additional discussion?
I, I don't disagree with the two minutes, but, but the reason why I said, you know, if it's a busy meeting, maybe have it one, have it one minute. And I was using your wisdom when I said that because you brought the point. What if there's thirty or forty people in the room that want to speak? That's two minutes each. That's an hour, hour and twenty minutes by my, uh, I think it, uh, so that's, that's a long time.
Sure is.
So that, that particular meeting, I would say we're going to hold it to one minute because of some, because of the, so many people in the room. So it doesn't go an hour and twenty minutes.
Well, right, I, I would agree that that would be preferable, but the language says a minimum of two per speaker should be allowed. That's my reservation, is that I would rather the chair have the discretion to do what you described rather than be essentially mandated to a two-minute minimum. That's my, that's my concern, just as a practical matter. It's not going to come up all the time. And again, sometimes there may be a value in allowing the people to speak for as long as they would like or at least the two minutes that they're coming there to speak to. But there are other considerations at these meetings. A town meeting warrant often has thirty or so articles on it, so, um, there are a lot of things to cover, so. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second, we have exhausted discussion, we will have a vote. Mr. Bledser, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
All right. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. McKay. Good luck. So the next thing on our agenda was Article 29, but that has been postponed, um, at least for the time being. And we will now move into our own version of public comment. The select board has a three minutes, not minimum, but you have a three-minute maximum per speaker and then we can have the discretion to embiggen that if we choose to do so. Do, do we have any public comment at this time? Ah, yes. Mr. Donardo, your digital hand is raised. You have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. I just want to, uh, take, take a little bit of time and just tell you what. This, um, I'm town meeting member from precinct seventeen. We all know that it was a very contentious battle of the sixteen C, the senior housing. We always had public comment in Zoom. In the closing days on Article sixteen C, uh, public comment, new business and old business, if you review the minutes of that, of those meetings, were taken, were taken off. What had happened in the final weeks was new information came forward. And that was if this article did not pass and it was proposed that new apartments would be put in at that location. So there was an outcry, uh, from the public in order to be heard on that. So since then, we have not had, uh, public comment, uh, on our agenda. And, uh, as far as the issue of having many people, uh, attend, then the chair should postpone the discussion and make it an agenda item. I do want the public to know that, uh, public comment is limited to just that public comment. It shouldn't, there should not be any heavy discussion because the public has a right to be notified of what is being discussed. So there is, so there is good and bad with this. So I just believe now, obviously, we all believe it's common sense, but some precinct chairs, uh, don't want to adhere to that. Precinct chairs are not speakers of the House. With due respect to all moderators in Massachusetts, they're not speakers of the House. Town meeting is town meeting. It is the consensus of the body. Chairs and moderators are refereed to facilitate the meeting as they would a football game. And I just believe and I hope town meeting will pass this. And never mind the fact that we are the foundation of, of self-governance, but thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Donardo. Any other public comment by anyone either physically present or joining us virtually? All right. Hearing and seeing none, that brings us into the town manager's report. Mr. Brindisi?
Great. Thanks again. Such a few updates I'd like to bring to the board's attention. I think I mentioned this, I don't know, at previous meetings, but, um, the hot copies of the most recent edition of the magazine are available. These are at, um, somewhere still left at Town Hall, but most of them are gone. But you can find them at the Cal and you can also find them at the library. So again, second edition, still looking for feedback for folks who think that there's other information we can provide in this magazine. We're happy to do that. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention also that, um, the, um, long-awaited renovation of the boardwalk over, uh, at the town boat ramp will begin on Monday. Demolition begins on Monday. According to Mr. David Gould, we are expecting a four to six week construction period. So if everything goes right, that boardwalk will be rebuilt just in time for the summer months. Uh, and then the other thing I just wanted to talk about, there was a lot of, um, attention over the weekend to Billington Sea. As you all know, we had approximately seventy birds, uh, had, were deceased. We were made aware of a number of sick birds on Saturday. We were able to mobilize our, um, public safety team, Department of Health and Human Services, communications team in Public Works, um, to quickly organize a response. We tried to communicate, um, the happenings as, um, this response evolved over time. Um, and then on Sunday, after a conference call on Saturday evening with state officials from both Mass D E P and Mass D P H, the contracted, um, uh, remediation company, better known as Clean Harvest, came to town and removed again the sum of about seventy dead birds. There was a bird that was tested early in the week and that bird tested, what is the term called, non-negative. And so it's not a positive case, only because Jamaica Plain is our state lab. And that's administered by Mass D P H. They don't have the ability to determine whether or not any one of these birds are truly positive cases for, um, avian influenza. So the term non-negative comes up and you'll hear that often. Um, so because of that, we couldn't confirm, but we are highly sus- suspect that these birds do have avian flu. They have all the telltale signs of avian flu, the symptoms. And so many of the birds have been incinerated. Some of the birds were sent to the one and only lab in the nation that can make a definitive result of positive confirmation of avian influenza. So we're waiting to hear back, um, from our state partners on the final results of those birds. But again, you know, we are highly suspect that these birds that were found at Billington Sea and some of our other parks are, um, are positive for, for avian influenza. So there's a number of precautions that we issued over the weekend. We want folks to pay close attention to. What I learned was that, um, domestic cats are susceptible to bird flu, as, as well as our dogs as well. So we're really encouraging folks to keep an eye on their animals, trying to keep an eye on your children. Try not to let them in the area where we've identified dead birds. We have been told that, um, oftentimes that, uh, a virus like this will subside by late spring. So we believe it's going to be with us for the remaining parts of the winter and certainly through the early spring. Uh, so we want folks to take, um, uh, the precautions necessary. We really want folks to contact us. If you see a dead bird that you are suspicious of, we want you to contact our public health division by calling 508-322-3339. We do know folks have posted information on Facebook. We don't have the bandwidth to respond to every Facebook, uh, posting, but we do encourage folks to call us at, again, 508-322-3339 so that we can use, we can have our, you know, patrol officers go up there, assess the situation and then mount an appropriate response. So we'll keep an eye, close eye on this over the next couple of months. We'll report back to the community soon as information becomes available. Someone come on that. But I just, again, I really want to thank Chief Foley, our fire chief, Chris Horvath, our emergency management director, Michelle Brady, Health and Human Services Commissioner, Bill Coiler, D P W Director, Chief Flynn, our police chief, and Casey Kenya, Communications Coordinator, for the work that they did over the weekend to ensure a safe environment for our community. In particular, I really want to emphasize the groundwork that our health director, Karen Keen, did. She was boots on the ground. She was at Billington Sea. She met the state officials. She was knocking on doors. She was educating, uh, the residents in the area of what to look out for. So, um, although we had a team effort, large kudos go to Karen Keen and the work that she did, um, out there on the coal to try to make sure that we had all the information that we needed, uh, to make some informed decisions. So again, thank you to Karen Keen for her great work. Um, so again, we'll keep the folks, we'll keep the community posted as to how this issue evolves. And then we'll take it from there. So I'm going to end my comments at this point and turn it over back to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brindisi. Any questions for the town manager? Well, I don't have any questions, but I do appreciate the effort everyone went through responding to that presumptive bird flu incident over the weekend. So thank, thank you to everyone for doing that and for keeping the community informed. I know that people were concerned and confused about it, so it's good that people were on top of that despite the long weekend. That brings us into...
I, I didn't have a question, but I wanted to make a response, but, uh, I wasn't sure I could do that, so.
Well, you can now, Mr. Bledser.
Uh, Mr. Brindisi, Derek, I got, talking about Karen Keen. I, I had a constituent call me today and lives on Billington Sea and, uh, had questions about well as well. And, and he told me that she handled it unbelievable. She, he said she should get, uh, you know, an accommodation of the way she handled things and he was very impressed. She explained about, because there's like a hundred, there's still a lot more birds out there, explained about the safety to the staff and everything else, uh, with the pawns, you know, the thin ice and stuff at the time. So, but everything was explained, explained properly and the quick response was great. So again, I just want to reiterate, uh, that Karen, what a great job, so we're lucky to have her.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? It's our man. All right. That brings us to select board discussion. Any new business?
New business, I, uh, I was at the downtown waterfront district meeting and they brought up the outdoor dining. Again, I think it's time that, and I mentioned it to you today, Derek, that we get a meeting. And I, I told them, "Get, get a little committee and come before us and let's have a meeting." Not come before us, but let's have a meeting, uh, with, uh, with the town manager. I think Rick Vayo is going to get something together and come and meet so they can, they have a lot of questions. And then once they get their questions answered, then they come before us and make their presentation to us. Because I told them, you know, we, it's our decision to make, you know, and I explained that last year a couple, couple people didn't think it was profitable. So, you know, we want to hear, you know, we'll give them all the numbers so they know what, what's at stake and, and see if they think it's worth it for them to do it. And, uh, so that's, uh, that's coming up. Also, uh, D P W, I explained to them over the week, uh, over Thursday, they, they went out early in the morning, like five in the morning and blew off all the sidewalks and, uh, and swept, uh, the street sweepers. But unfortunately, a little curveball called snow, a little bit snow and ice, a little bit came in. It kind of hurt the effort, but still I thought it looked pretty good, so. Uh, and again, we talked more about the, the sidewalk, uh, the, the power washing. Until we can get a machine that can scrub the sidewalks in the downtown and the waterfront too, because it'll be able to use that whole district. But until we get that, uh, coming together with maybe a power wash in April. So, and, and Bill is working on a plan. I know, Derek, you, you talked about that. So they're all on board with, with, you know, Bill was worried about the splashing from the sidewalks onto their storefronts and so, uh, they'll have a meeting beforehand to, to, to do this collaborative effort between the businesses and the D P W. So, and the last thing is I, I was lucky enough to went to get into a meeting with the Health and Human Service, uh, Commissioner and she brought together all, a lot of the nonprofits. These are groups, nonprofits out there that, that I was so impressed with. They help veterans, they help seniors, they help substance abusers, mental health, all different groups from, from father bills, coalition of homeless, High Point D C F, and it was a few more. And it was a great roundtable. It was, it was almost two hours and it could have gone longer. There was so much information being, and it's going to happen again. It's going to get more people involved too. And just figuring out ways to, to, uh, come up with solutions for some of our social problems that we have in Plymouth. And it's, it's, I just want anybody out there that's watching or anybody that wants to spread the word, there is, we have so many resources out there. It's amazing that we have for our citizens. And that, this human, uh, Health and Human Service Commission, again, I don't know how we ever, uh, without it. I mean, the work that Michelle Brady and Emily, your assistant, are doing, it's amazing. So, uh, and not just, you know, it's not just the seniors. It's, it's veterans, it's homeless. It's, it's incredible. So anyway, I was lucky enough to attend that and we're going to make that, I think it's hopefully monthly that they have these meetings. So anyway, I'll keep you posted.
All right. Any other new business? Any letters? Any old business? All right. Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn, having concluded our business? All right.
Second.
All right. It has been moved. It has been seconded. Any discussion or objection? Hearing and seeing none, those in favor, please raise your hand. And those opposed, it is unanimous. We are adjourned at eight twenty-five P M. Thank you, everyone.